If the candidates want to come up here and choose their seats, and then we can just go right down and have them introduce themselves and go from there. I don't know who wants to go first. We can start at one end and go to the other, or go back and forth, however you guys want to do it. The microphones are on. You just shift it from mute to on. So I'll give one on each side. And that way you guys can go to the middle, or whoever wants to go first. We want to keep it kind of informal, kind of fair, as much as possible. So whoever wants to go first, start and introduce themselves, or I can start in, and I can go from here to Mr. DaQuisto and work over, or however you want to do it.
I'm Michael DaQuisto.
And go ahead and pass the microphone over if you want to do that.
Hi, I'm Brent Weaver.
Kristen Schrader.
Patrick Jones.
Francie Sullivan.
Mike Quinn.
In theory, this should work. And so I guess what we want to do is each guy, each candidate, give a guy/gal, give a statement, five minutes of what you're standing on, what your platform is, and I guess we can start at this end, and if you want, and just work our way over, and then we can work our way back, or however you guys want to do it. So you want to go ahead and have the floor, Mr. DaQuisto, and then we'll just start the debate, or the forum, however you want to do it.
Sure. Thank you very much for having me here. I appreciate it. My name is Michael DaQuisto, and obviously I'm running for city council, which is why I'm here tonight. I have a website, which is votedaquisto.com, and DaQuisto is spelled D-A-C-Q-U-I-S-T-O. There's some paraphernalia in the back. If you're interested, a sign or two, and some handouts and buttons. Let me tell you a little bit about myself and why I'm running for city council. My family and I moved here from Southern California in 1994. And we did that because we wanted to raise our two young children in an atmosphere that was not Los Angeles and was not a big city. And the way that we chose Reading is I spent two years driving around the state looking for a place to move my law practice, because I have a law degree from USC and an undergraduate degree in economics from Stanford. And we found a law practice up here and decided to buy it. We moved here and didn't know anybody. And we raised our kids, and it's the best decision we ever made. I wish I'd come 20 years earlier. So from 1994 until today, it's about 20 years. Kids are grown, they're off in college, graduated from college, they have jobs. And while they were growing up, one of the most important things that I told them was you need to give something back to the community. You need to participate more than just getting up in the morning and living and breathing and going to school. And we tried to show that in what we did, my wife and I. We showed it to our kids. And we've done it in a number of different ways. I started with the library when I first came here, joined the Friends of the Library, worked on a fundraising campaign to get the library open on Saturdays. That progressed, and the library evolved around. I was involved in an intergovernment committee between the city and the county, which involved cooperation among the parties. And that led to the ultimate agreement to have the city take over the library and have a private entity run it and fund it. And it's worked out very, very well. So that's a perfect example of participation that we've had and community involvement. And it's also made that area of the government more efficient, because it's not run by the city, it's not run by the county, it's run by a private contractor. The costs are relatively fixed. The library has more people in it now than it ever had before. So all in all, it's a win-win situation. I had one other thing that I was involved in, and I think is important, and it was the Sundial Film Festival. We started that, a group of us did, in connection with a service club. And we started about five or six years ago, and the goal was to have young filmmakers have an opportunity to show what they had made on the theater, on the big screen in the Cascade Theater. And the first year, it worked out very, very well. And we did it for three years. And we got more and more filmmakers, we got filmmakers from all over, we got young people who went into that area and went to college and did that, we got some that came back and did it. We finally wound up after three years saying, "We need somebody else to take this over." So we found the 2030 Club, which is a group of young professionals in town, and we were able to help them transition. They've taken over the Sundial Film Festival, and it's bigger now than it ever was. And there are people who participate in it, who make their living in town, they have jobs, and they employ people in the film industry and in the entertainment industry. And that's an important thing for this town and what we have. Now let me tell you, so I want to give back to the community. I think my experience can help to do that. What do you need to look for when you look for a city council member? And what do you think, what do I think is important? I think there's two things. One is you need someone with some vision, and one is you need someone that has some ability to work with others, to listen, to cooperate, and to get along. And let me tell you a little bit about my vision for the city of Reading. The number-one issue that I hear about when I go out, and I'm sure we'll talk about it, is crime. And everybody says, "Crime, crime, 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 crime." I proposed a solution that can be undertaken immediately. And the solution comes from the fact that the city of Reading, according to its last audited financial statement as of June of 2013, had $12.5 million in unassigned funds in the general fund. Their policy requires they keep $3 to $3.5 million. That leaves approximately $9 million available that could be spent today. So my proposal was to do what Chief Paletti wanted, one of the things, to hire community service officers. And they're $80,000 to $100,000 a year. You could hire 10 community service officers, which would free up the regular police officers. It would cost you $1 million. You could try it for one year and see if things got better. If you did that, you would still have $8 million left in your reserve, over and above what you needed to have. That's a solution you could do today. That's 30 seconds. The second thing that you need for a good city council member is the ability to cooperate and get along with others. As an attorney for 35 years, and I'm also a bankruptcy trustee, which means I deal with creditors and debtors who have problems. I help them work their way through the problems. Everybody, in large part, comes out happy. And I think that's an important attribute. The city council is not a king or queen, it's five people. And it's made to be group decisions, and that's what we need on the city council. And I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank you all for being here tonight, spending time away from your family, because you care about this community. And you care enough to put the time in to listen to what we're going to say tonight, so that you can make an informed decision on moving this community forward. So I thank you for being here. I also want to thank the other candidates. I think this is our fifth or sixth forum, and one of the things that I've been enlightened about is we do all have different styles. And there are issues we disagree on. But I can say, after listening to these people for the last five or six forums, they each want to move this community forward. So I thank them. So I grew up in Reading. Went through our school system, graduated from Shasta High. Like a lot of kids who grew up here, I went away for college. I had an opportunity during college to live abroad. I served a two-year church mission in Taiwan. I also had a chance to do a study abroad in Israel. And I share that only because it created an appreciation in me for the country that I was born into, the community I came from, my family, and my friends. After college, my wife and I, well, first of all, I got hired in the technology industry, and I worked as a business analyst. And I had to look at inefficiencies or certain processes within the company that were broken, and how could we improve them. Half of the time was spent in Utah, and half of that time was spent in the Bay Area. After my wife and I had our first child, we made the decision to move back to Reading to raise our family. Today, I have four young children, ages 3 to 11, two boys, two girls. And if you really want to boil down why I am running for city council, is I want to make this community the best community I possibly can for my children and for your children or grandchildren. Many people might know of me or my family through the lumber business. Just across the street, for over four decades, my father and my two uncles operated Hughes Plywood and Hughes Redwood. From 8th grade summer on, until I graduated high school, I worked at those lumber yards. And I learned work ethic. I learned how to work with people that were older than myself. I also had to learn how to work for very little pay. And I know I called out my uncle last time I was here, but he did not give me very much per hour that first summer I worked for him after 8th grade. But he gave me something more important than the hourly rate. He taught me to appreciate what I was able to earn with my hard work. So I've, in being back for the last 10 and 1/2 years, I've operated Hughes Plywood and Hughes Redwood. In the last two years, when Moss Lumber closed, I had the opportunity to buy that location. And so I moved both of my lumber yards over there. One of the things that I'm very, very proud of since being back is when I started, we had seven employees. Today, we average between 40 to 45 employees, depending on the time of year. And it feels so good to employ people and see what it does for themselves, for their dignity that they feel, for their families. I've also had a chance to take some risks. And some of those have been those mixed-use projects I've built in our downtown core. The Gateway Building, which has apartments in it and different commercial spaces, and more recent, the Pine Street Lofts, which has, again, apartments and office spaces in there. So we'll be talking more about experiences tonight. What has shaped us and how we view problems? How we view how we're going to fix some of these problems? I think there can be no higher compliment than for somebody to say, "Brent's a business person. Brent's had business success. He will look at things the way a business person will look at an issue," because I certainly will. So I think the defining issue of this campaign is clearly the rise in crime, and how it's affecting each of us as individuals, how it's affecting us as families, how it's affecting us as business owners. A few months ago, I wrote a speaker piece, and I outlined 11 different steps that we might consider in a strategic plan. Everything from reinvigorating our neighborhood watch programs and connecting these neighborhood watch leaders. Code enforcement. You know, how are we going to address the number of landlords, slum lords, who are operating these seedy apartment complexes or rundown motels, who are making profit off it, but we as taxpayers have to pay for all of those calls to those hotels and apartments? So if you want to learn more, you can go to my Facebook page. I got a few seconds left. But again, I appreciate you all being here today. I want to move this community forward. I've shown in the last 10 years, I can tackle big issues, and I will do the same thing if you elect me on November 4th. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for, thank you all for coming. My name is Kristen Schrader, and I want to contribute to the city of Reading and build a better community. I was born and raised in Reading, just like Brent. I graduated from Enterprise High School. I graduated from CSU, Chico. And then I moved away. And in 1994, my husband and I decided to move back to Reading to raise our two children. The Schrader Planeta, well, at that time, I started working in our community. I got involved in community projects, I got involved with school district projects, and I wanted to continue to build a better community. The Schrader Planetarium is an honor to my family, and I want to do more. I also have built physical projects in our community. I've formed nonprofits, and I've led nonprofits that have had a meaningful impact in our community. One of the projects is the Women's Fund. We've raised funds to provide for women and families and other nonprofits for education and training. I've also started an entrepreneur program for women to learn how to become self-employed for their family. I've also built community projects that range from playgrounds to jogging paths to art programs. In addition to that, my husband and I built and have maintained a successful business for 28 years. The work I've done throughout the state is to help public schools plan and access funding for school construction and renovation. Locally, I've written grants for $70 million in local school construction projects. One of the smaller projects that I did as a volunteer, and I organized it from top to bottom, was we raised and spent $250,000 to renovate the Manzanita Fields Playgrounds, and I built a jogging pack there. Additionally, I have spent the last 16 years as an elected school trustee. I'm currently the president of the Shasta Union High School District Board. We manage a $42 million budget. We have to make, I have had to make tough choices, along with my fellow board members, in these trying times and economic uncertainty. I have balanced budgets for 16 years, balancing the needs of students, the staff, and the taxpayer. Those experiences and my desire to help Reading be the best it can be is why I hope you'll consider my vote, voting for me for city council.
Well, first, thank you all for having us tonight. It is a privilege and an honor, and it's a privilege for me to serve two terms on the Reading City Council, and I'm very humbled by that. And while we still have a lot of work to go, it is a humbling, humbling process to be elected and then reelected, and I'm asking for your vote November 4th to be reelected again. And the reason why is because the work isn't done. Tonight, I want to do something a little bit. I want to give Francie Sullivan some credit tonight. She's about the opposite of me. I'm a very much a fiscal conservative, and Francie has been very liberal. But she's made no bones about that, and I think she's been true to her constituents that elected her. And for that, I say thank you for being who you are and for being true as she's ran through her platform and her campaigns. And I've done the same thing. I'm a fiscal conservative. I believe in a, I believe in government, but I believe in a small, a smaller government that's efficient. And so while our policies greatly differ, I think we have not tried to deceive the public in how we're going to vote and how we're going to operate, as we have done on the dais at Reading City Council meetings and at City Hall. Here's one small fact, and there are many throughout City Hall, things that really make me upset that I want to fix. I grew up here in Reading. I worked in a small business. That business is still operating today on Cypress Avenue, 53 years later, and I've been there over 40 years myself. So we understand how hard it is to work for that dollar. One small example, Reading Area Bus Authority. We spend about $8 million a year on that. And when we spend a dollar, we get back nine cents on the dollar, and the board feels that's acceptable. Now that's your gas tax and your sales tax going towards public transportation in a system that's highly inefficient. And we shouldn't tolerate that. And there are many things in government that are just like that, nine cents on the dollar. They say they can't do any better than that, but yet, private sector shuttles make a profit. But yet, we can't. Well, we can, but we haven't had the type of people that serve, that care about your tax dollars enough to make it happen. That's what I've done over the last seven and 1/2 years, almost eight years. And I'm willing to do it four more years to make those tough decisions. Now, I've been the guy that's constantly in the paper where you hear about "no." Know this, know that. Keep in mind that about 80% of the time, I do say yes, but you're going to hear a lot of those "noes," because on some of these big items, I do have a different point of view. That point of view is from a fiscal conservative, that maybe there's a different way to do it. Maybe there's a better way to do it. Government, I see here, is not efficient. And it's not that it can't, it's that we're not doing it. And I'm happy today to see that so many people come to council meetings, so much so, and speak, that they move the public comment period to the back, because sometimes they don't want to hear those folks speak. But I'm proud that people come forward and say, "We want you to be accountable for your actions." There are many, many issues that affect us in the city of Reading. Many, many things that make our life better or worse. With a $300 million budget, we do not have a revenue problem. We have a spending problem at City Hall. If you vote for me, I will continue to do what I've done the last eight years. For four more years, with your help, I can do that. I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. I think that's not exactly the way I would describe myself. I think I can squeeze pennies with the best of them. I'm Francie Sullivan. I'm the vice mayor of the city of Reading, and I too share Patrick's feelings of humility at being in this position. It is an honor to serve and to try and make things as good as we can for people in the city of Reading. I was born and raised in Montana, and I went away to college too. I went away to Reading. I came to Shasta College, but I'd had family here since before Mount Larson erupted. My great uncle, Rob Williams, moved to Whitmore in the 19, early 1900s from Montana. So I feel pretty close to being a native, although I've certainly got my loyalties to Montana. I've lived here most of the time since then. Took a brief interlude to Oregon State University, where I got a degree. I lived in Burnie in the 70s, where I met my husband, who was a forester for a private timber company, Publishers Forest Products. And while I lived in Burnie, I became addicted to the library. In a small town, libraries are golden. It's where I made all my friends, and it's where I got started in local government. We started driving down in blizzards and on black ice to fight for library funding. And eventually, in that fight, I ran for the board of supervisors, discovered that when you actually have the option to focus all the money to libraries, those pesky deputy sheriffs and paved roads and things are also part of your responsibility. So it was a good learning curve, that, you know, you have the luxury of biases when you don't actually have to make the hard decisions. It was a, it was a very good experience for me. About 10 years ago, my husband and I moved to the Bay Area to help take care of family. And the first chance we got, we did something we never expected to do. We moved back to Reading. Every day, I read the temperatures in Reading to my husband. I missed the heat. I missed everything about Reading. And when we moved back, we felt like we'd been given the greatest gift, because Reading never looked so good to us before. We are grateful for the trails, we're grateful for the rivers, and I ran for city council because I want Reading to be the best place it can be. Over the past four years, we've balanced the budget. We've built up healthy reserves by negotiating cuts with the employees in benefits and salary and hours. And it's been very tough. We've laid off over 100 employees. Mr. Jones was there for more of that than I was. Most of that had happened before I arrived, but it was necessary. Hard times, and the city had the ability to respond to that. We have healthy reserves now, and because of those healthy reserves, you'll never read about Reading declaring bankruptcy. I'm running this time because I think things are starting to get better. We know that sales tax is going up. It certainly looks to me from the number of car dealers, like more people are buying new cars and spending money. There's a slight increase in people buying houses. And I want to be here for the building process. I'm grateful we're finally solving the police station dilemma. I don't think most of us thought we'd live long enough to see a police station built. We've expanded the airport with a lot of federal funds. That's good in case we get an airline to come here and help us with our job recruitment. We're doing a lot of, a lot of projects like that that need to be done. We, as a community, are addressing the issue of safety in the homeless. And it's going to take all of us to make an improvement in that situation. And the community is stepping up to the plate. We all know we have to, we all have to live more like we live in the big city we've become. We can't leave computers in the car. We can't leave our car unlocked. We can't leave our houses unlocked. We have to make our town less friendly to criminals. And we also need even more, more police. We need sworn, trained police officers driving around town as a discouragement from criminals. And we also need consequences. We need more bed space. We need the ability to send people to other jails, if we can do that. And Measure F is going to make that possible. I want to make Reading the best place to live, work, and raise a family. And I need your vote to do that. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for being here. My name is Mike Quinn. If my speech teacher in Mullen High School, when I was a sophomore, could see me now, he would laugh, because he called my name in the first class I was supposed to give a speech in, and he said, "Your turn." And I said, "No." And he said, "What?" And I said, "No, I'm not going to give a speech." And they made a big mistake, because they didn't make me get up. But I've learned how to, over the years, to get up and speak. Come from a very patriotic family, we were at the original Tea Party. If you go to the U.S. State Department and you look on the board that says Americans who died for their country, number one, and there's Colonel William Paul Free, we are Paul Frees. Very, very proud of that. He was George Washington's paint master and stayed through the thick and the thin of it all. We have grown up on that. We've been raised, forgotten family, and I'm very, very proud of that. I was reminded this weekend at the first, when I met somebody after the Democratic Debate, and they walked up to me and they said, "Do you remember me?" And I said, "I do, but I don't." And she said, "You stood next to me when we fought the fluoride issue against the city of Reading, and we won." And I was reminded of the very first time that I stood up in this community and said, "Enough is enough." But I had forgotten that. And I'm a historian, I love history, because I believe if you do not remember history, you're going to repeat it. And I don't want to do that. So I look back through all the years that I've gone to the city council meetings, close to 20 years, maybe even more with some of the other subjects. And I remember what went on, and I remember how we got here from there. And it is so important, so we don't repeat. I have served this community on a number of boards, and I see Charlie Minore out there today, because he and I were on the original police building committee. And if they had listened to us then, Charlie, we would have a much better building. We wouldn't have had to move REU out, because they had their own building. They may have had a gun range underneath. There were so many things that were done, and they didn't listen to us. And I also learned, in serving on committees, how inefficient government is and how they don't know how to budget. Because when they built our veteran cemetery out there, it took federal budgeting, state budgeting, county budgeting, and they left out something. The three of them, putting their heads together, forgot water. They forgot you need to put water at a cemetery. And they said, "We can't fix it. There won't be any water." So a group got together, and this is a small group of people, and there are three who have passed away. Bob Cassis, Ken Snyder, and Glenn Miller. And it was a very small group, and we said, "This is not going to happen." And we were the first ones to put together what's called a perpetual fund. We said, "If we raise $200,000, and we give it to the community fund over here, what they generate every year will pay the water bill." And we set a goal of $200,000. We got to $220,000. We handed the check over, and we disbanded, which is one of the best groups I could imagine, because you set a goal, you saw a problem, set a goal, got to that goal in a new way that nobody had thought of before. And now that is a permanently solved problem. And I really salute all the people that were on there. And the best meeting was the last one, because they all stood up and said, "Well, we're going to miss each other, but you know, there'll be another issue that comes up." And so you've got to look and see what the problems are, and you have to solve them, and you have to look at new ways. And that was a brand-new way to do it. When I stepped outside my radio station on Market Street, I saw holes in the ground. And I knew that some of them were just where they cut off the old meters. But there were some other ones out there. And I went down to the Historical Society, and I was looking at a picture from 1928, and they showed the flags down Market Street. That started the flag project downtown, and I'm very proud to have started that. And it now goes downtown, and pretty soon, you will see it go downhill Top Drive. It is, it is growing. There's another nonprofit group called YPS that I'm a member of. We will spread that, so it goes across the bridges, and pretty soon, we will circle this town in flags on the patriotic holidays. But you have to see something. Sometimes you have to look up, and sometimes you have to look down. And then you have to do a little bit of investigation, and that's what I do. I'm a numbers person. That's, I crunch them all day long. And I heard that we are in great shape. Our city is not going to go bankrupt, but you know what? The businesses out there are. And how strong, usually you have a great, strong city, but the businesses out there are failing, because you raise their electric rates. And when you raise the electric rates, you raise the water rates and the wastewater rates. And pretty soon, you've killed those businesses out there, because you don't know how that's going to work, unless you've been in a business. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you all. That was really good. We have Robert coming up here, Red Smith, and we've got three questions that we are going to ask everyone, and you can pretty much answer them in any order that you want, or we can go right down the line, whatever you guys feel comfortable with. But we thought these were probably the best questions that needed to be brought up, and it would eliminate for, you know, we want to keep our time pithy here to a degree, so it doesn't just drag on. So we're trying to, you know, get it as much on the table as we can in the short amount of time. So with that, go ahead and ask the first question, Red.
Considering that...
I'm sorry, hold on, Red. What? Yes, there's two minutes to respond to the question. If anybody wants to rebut, you get a minute to rebut. Okay? You don't have to answer the question or respond to it if you don't want to. Okay? Go ahead, Red.
Considering that CalPERS is heavily dependent on the stock market and the amount of unfunded liability outstanding in the city of Reading, if the city of Reading comes online to pay for that unfunded liability, what is your specific plan to deal with that?
Okay, it's a, it's a large problem, huge problem. We've heard all the numbers, 300 million and all that. Let's look at what the county's done. Years ago, they started paying into it. They saw it was coming. Have they paid into it all the way? No, but they've gotten a good start on it. Because the good thing about that is it's $300 million, but it's not all due in one day. So you've got to set out an actuarial and see where are we and where should we start putting our money? And that is one place which, when you have a reserve, that you should start setting that aside. It is very difficult to say that you want to give it to PERS after their record. Their record in the stock market and their record of the corruption that they had where they lost the money in PERS. So it's very important, how are you going to invest that? Do we keep it here and set it aside in a separate reserve for that? Or do we hand it to them? That's something that we're going to have a lot of thought and a lot of discussion over. But you start right now, and you start putting, and you put it on the books. It's not on the books. I'm an accountant by trade. When I see a huge number like that, and it's not on the books and not being addressed, we're heading for trouble.
Actually, it is on the books. Gatsby 45, which set in place, putting the PERS payment, the retirement money in place, required a completely different way for local governments to keep their books. There always was unfunded liability. There always was money put away for future retirements and pensions and insurance for retirees. Obviously, when money was flush, you know, 15, 20 years ago, I can't even remember how, that's a distant memory now, but certainly pensions statewide got out of whack. People lost sight that the money wouldn't just keep, you know, doesn't just keep going up. But the analogy that I think best explains the pension is it's similar to our mortgage. No one, when they get their first mortgage, have the money in the bank to pay off the mortgage. What you have, what you have to assure your bank, what you have to assure your own checkbook is that you have a payment plan, that you have the ability to make the payments. And that, the city has spent a lot of time on that. This has been unexpected. It's part of why there have been big cuts. It's part of why we don't spend the reserves. Our reserves are up slightly now from what is required by city policy. But we don't spend those because of exactly this kind of thing. So, but the city budgets over 10 years, they have a 10-year budget. They do long-range planning, and they, in fact, the reserve account is not for one year. That number, that 5%, which is more than $3 million, is required to be kept at that level. That's the minimum, and it's over a 10-year. So they're always looking to the future.
The problem with Councilmember Sullivan's analogy is that your mortgage is decreasing. It starts, and then you work on it, and you start getting it paid down. And over time, that number gets smaller. Today, city of Reading's unfunded liabilities are growing at over $350 million and climbing. So we're not doing our job. We're not controlling those costs, and the costs are escalating each year. Next year, it's estimated to cost us another $5 million more out of a roughly $68 million general fund. So we have to be tough negotiators, and we have failed to do that as well. Behind closed doors, in those closed sessions, which the public does not see, that's where most of the work is done with 10 bargaining units. That's where saying no sometimes when no one is looking is going to be very helpful. Today, at the city of Reading, we spend 75 cents of every dollar in pay-in benefits. 75 cents of every dollar pay-in benefits. For example, and I hate to pick on the fire department because we have excellent firefighters, we have excellent police officers, and we don't have enough of them either, but for firefighters, the average for the city of Reading costs you, the taxpayer, is $15,200. And the benefits associated with that are extremely high, and we simply cannot afford it. And I don't care if you look at 10 or 20 other cities in California, they're all doing the same thing. They're all making the same mistakes. We have to live within our means, and we have to reduce these numbers, and we have to pay in more than what we're doing today. But we can't because 75 cents of every dollar is going to pay in benefits. It's a matter of saying no when it's unpopular. I can tell you, it's very nice to say yes. It'd make everybody happy. The problem is your unfunded liabilities start climbing. For post-retirement healthcare alone is $120 million unfunded. And we've always had liabilities. Councilmember Sullivan is correct. But they're not supposed to grow. We're supposed to be able to get a handle on those, and we're supposed to leave council better than the way we found it. And that's not what's happening. We must elect some fiscal conservatives that will make these tough, unpopular decisions with our employees because that's what they will be.
Okay, now this one's on. Thank you. This is a serious concern as with, you know, many items in our budget and the economy, the what we've been experiencing. It is a recognized, Gatsby 45 is a document that we recognize those needs to put money aside for the retirement. And I'm very familiar with that in my 16 years working as a school trustee, serving as a school trustee. For example, in the Shasta Union High School District, we've been setting money aside for that very reason. And we have also protected our reserves in case of unforeseen problems, especially when it comes to the liability for our pensions. So it is a problem, and I agree with Francine's description that it's a mortgage, it's like your home mortgage. You put money away, and we have in the high school district, and the city has put money away. And I think it's achievable by working closely and working diligently with our unions. It's a negotiated item that you have to work with. So every time a contract comes up, that should be on the table for negotiations. And so you have to work at it little bit by little bit to accomplish a balanced budget over the long haul. And we would be able to pay for these costs. It's not going to happen the first, you know, first day, first year. And we're also subject to the PERS recalculation of what the debt is and the actuarial determinations that are done. I think it's every other year. So there are a lot of things at play. I have a lot of experience working through that issue, and I'd be happy to do that at the city council.
Is that for me? Okay. So this is a great question. The first step I would take is to try to really understand the enormity of this issue. And I think over the last 10 months, I have done that. I've met multiple times with our city manager. I actually read our entire city budget from beginning to end. I do not recommend that to anybody. I've met with city council members on both sides of this issue to try to see it from different walks of life, different experiences. But ultimately, at the end of the day, I will address this issue exactly how I've addressed it in my business. If you go back to 1996 to 2001, our funding percentage as far as, we were in the, we were over 100%, which means we were super-funded. We had more money than we needed during that 1996 to 2001. What do we know about that time? We know that we were riding an economy that was not sustainable. Everyone was under the impression that we were going to keep going up. You could borrow against your house. We would never go down. And we set policy based on that. But any of those, those of us who have been in business know that business is not like this. Business is up, and it's down, and it's up, and it's down. And one of the first things I told you here, when I introduced myself, is I will take those hard-earned lessons from the business world, and I will apply that as a city council member. And one of the things I've learned in business is you cannot set policy at the height of the market, and you certainly cannot set policy at the bottom of the market. You need to try to understand it. Regarding our reserves, there's been a lot of discussion about the 12.6 million. And I think it's important to do some homework on that, if that's an accrual basis or a cash basis. But let's go ahead and use the accrual because that's how the 12.6 million is reported. If you actually divide that from our general fund, that works out to 18 days of operating our city's economy. And if we, 18 days at 5 million, excuse me, got to get these numbers right. And if we did it at the 12.6 million, that's three weeks, 21 days. I know no businessperson in this room that would operate a business with that small amount of reserve when we are looking at a $300 million enterprise. Thank you.
Let me try and answer the question and start with a little bit of an explanation because it is complicated. The benefits, the retirement benefits that the city pays are what they call defined benefit. It's a defined benefit plan, and it means that what you get is calculated on what you earn in some fashion when you retire. I have a 401K or an IRA. That's called a defined contribution plan. That means what I put in each year is defined, and at the end of that year, I'm done. And whatever I have, when I'm ready to take it out, is what I have. So the city has a drastically different model than 95% of us do or 95% of private enterprises do. And the problem with that model is when the only source of income for a city is taxes that it has to take. It's not a profit-making business. And it promises those out benefits with factors it can't control, like how long you're going to live or how much money PERS is going to make. Those are things that make the system unsustainable. The first thing you've got to do is you've got to stop the bleeding. You can't do it tomorrow, but the solution for the problem, and it's going to take some statewide effort, and I would work on lobbying for this, is to start a two-tiered system with new hires getting the equivalent of a 401K. The city can make a contribution. They can negotiate how much they're going to match. They can match a lot. But at the end of the year, when you hire somebody, you know what it's going to cost you, and that cost is done. When you hire someone today, unless it's for a fixed term, you don't know what the cost is going to be. The city has two parts they pay in. They pay a percentage of the match depending on what they've negotiated with the union. So if it's 10% of your salary and the city pays 5 and union pays 5, that's a yearly payment. The second payment, and the one you don't know and have less control over, is what CalPERS charges you each year. And that's where the difficulty lies. And as long as you're in CalPERS and you continue to stay in that program, you're going to have problems meeting your payments with people living longer, and you're dependent on CalPERS and what they make. So you need to negotiate harder.
Francine, you want to rebut that?
I don't really actually want to rebut anyone specifically, but I just want to remind everyone something that I know many of you know because you're already in that position. These decisions cannot be arbitrarily made by the city council, not the one that Patrick and I sit on, not any city council. We have unions, we have labor laws in California, and all of these decisions are negotiated. They have to be negotiated. We have a professional negotiator at the direct direction of the council. He works for us. He takes his direction from us. And I just think that's really important because certainly people come to council meetings and think that we can force these decisions, and that's not the way it works. We have to work with the employees. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, let's go with Christian and then, or Kristin, Kristin, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
The other thing that none of us remembered to mention, I don't think, is that in January of 2013, the state implemented through what's called PEPRA, the revision to the pension plan. So they took some of the decisions away from cities and implemented a two-tiered plan. Now, that's not the total answer, and we need to look hard at each year, at all of the contracts. But there was a big movement that changed how we pay pensions beginning in January of 2013.
There's another reserve account that people never talk about. It's supposed to be $35 million. It's in REU. So some of the employees of the city of Reading and REU have 35 million. It's been as high as 50 million. They've raised the rate 50% over the last six years. Now, they just took $5 million out to put down on the building on Airport Road because they saw that as a greater need than anything else. Anytime that you raise the rates on people to their homes, their businesses, and all that, you're hurting people badly. And there's 35 million in there. So there is other money out there, and I'm on the commission, the REU commission, and we don't get a lot of visitors, and we need more people to pay attention, and we never report to the city council. We've got to start reporting so people know these things.
So I just thought I can take another minute here, so I am. So with REU, there's a guideline to have 20% in your reserve. And with the general fund, it's a 5%. And I think it's very important to ask the question, well, why do we have such large reserves, depending on how you look at it? And it's because it affects our bond ratings and how we can borrow against that money to improve infrastructure and move those things forward. So keep that in mind. I think the hard work of this council to get our reserve up to 9 to 12 million, depending on if it's accrual or cash basis, it's very critical to make sure we can borrow money cheaply to improve infrastructure. Thank you.
Back in 2010, it was a hard-fought campaign and a hard year for council members. We finally were able, and that we were, you know, we were right in the midst of the global recession. We finally got our employees to come forward and pay 7%. We've been paying 100% retirement for a 30-year period. Let me say that again. We've paid 100% of the retirement for 30 straight years. And while that was negotiated for back 30 years ago, the pay and the benefit obviously have come up over time, and it was simply unsustainable. So while we got our employees to pay 7% for non-public safety and 9% for public safety, then council decided, along with councilmember Sullivan's vote, to give them pay raises above and beyond that. So there was no win to this. So while it's a give-and-take, we continue to lose with who we have on council today.
No? Each get one shot at that, so otherwise it'd get chaotic. I also think as a suggestion, Red, maybe read the question before each person speaks again because, if nothing else, for the benefit of the audience, so that, you know, because you get lost in this stuff, and I think it'd be helpful to read the question between each speaker.
In the light of the recent city staff salary increases of $1 million a year, is it really necessary to burden the city with a further quarter cent sales tax? Or should we just simply be more fiscally responsible with funds we already have?
I'm glad we're having a discussion about the reserve. It's unfortunate it didn't occur back in January when the figures came out, and it's taken the election now, but it's an important discussion. If you have $9 million over and above what you have to keep, why would you need to raise taxes? Take some of the money, try to spend it on your most important issue. If they now want to say the most important issue is not crime, it's the pensions, that's a fair discussion. I don't have any problem with that. I think the most important issue is crime, and I think you spend a little bit of it on it, and you do it now. And it's a way to get an immediate solution to the problem. So I don't see any reason that you need to raise taxes at this time when you have the reserve. If you spend the reserve down and you're down to your $3 million or $3.5 million, and you still haven't solved the problem and you need more money, then, and there's no other source? Okay? Because how does government get money? Only one way, and it's raise taxes. Or use taxes from state and federal governments when they pay you or you get grants to do things. The only source of government's money all across the board is taxes. And I don't see a reason now in the city of Reading that we have to raise the taxes.
In the light of the recent city staff salary increases of almost $1 million a year, is a quarter cent sales tax necessary to fund our public safety? Or do we simply need to be more fiscally responsible with the funds that we already have?
Okay. So I think absolutely, and I called it seven, eight months ago, that I think the defining issue of this campaign and of this race is public safety. Without an adequate level of safety, how we're addressing the rise in crime, AB 109 prisoner realignment, everything else is a non-starter. Security is one of the most fundamental principles that we expect from government. There's a lot of things we don't get right in local government or national government, but one of the things we have come to expect as citizens is an appropriate level of public safety. We have a very, very immense problem. We know that. Regarding Measure F, one of the things as a businessperson that I just fundamentally at my core, and I know there's people that disagree with me, but before I ask for money from a bank for a building I'm going to do or for investing back into my lumber business, is you have to have a plan first that has clearly defined objectives, measurables. How else do you know, as a business owner, if you're spending that money wisely? I think there is a time for how you discuss how you fund that plan, but today where we're at, it's about discussing a plan with strategies and solutions. I feel like I've tried to start that conversation with that speaker piece. I would ask, if you have time, to please go to my Facebook page and read that speaker piece with the 11 steps I put on there. At the point in time that we create this strategy, these solutions to move forward on the number of issues we have here in Reading, then we'll discuss how we're going to fund it. And that might be from looking at better-than-expected revenues coming in through the form of sales tax. And heaven forbid, I will never sign any pledge that takes any option off the table. I make one promise to each of you. If you elect me on November 4th, I will get us the change we expect on public safety.
Well, in answer to the question... Well, in answer to the question about, it's about how are you going to fund public safety, I think, and I think we should consider all options. One of the options is to look at increased revenue that came in excess of what was originally budgeted, for example, for 2013, '14. Another example is to possibly reprioritize the reserves, but it has to be done in a very concerted, thoughtful way about how to spend reserves, because when the reserves, which are one-time money, are spent on personnel costs such as CSO officers, and when the money runs out, or you have a higher need because something unexpected happened, possibly with the PERS calculation, then what do you do with the staff that you just funded with one-time money? You don't have reoccurring revenue stream for those, for that staff. So in answer to the question about the sales tax, then I think at the time that the mayor suggested it and the city council approved putting it on the ballot, it is a viable consideration for our community to vote on and decide whether it's important enough to raise the taxes for public safety. And because it's specified that it's for public safety, I am supporting the sales tax. And I'm, but the citizens get to vote on it. I am hoping that everyone will weigh all the options and consider sales tax, increased revenue, and hopefully the economy will improve.
Well, I can tell you for sure that we have a crime problem, there's no question about it, and attention does need to be addressed to it, but raising taxes is the wrong solution, and in fact, it might do more harm than good. One of the first things that you should do, if you want to put more money to police or fire or any other department, is take a look at your general fund budget, analyze it, dissect it, reduce those areas that are not essential or as important, and then fund something else. We did no such thing. You'll see my rebut to this argument on the ballot this year. I wrote that. And simply put, before we raise your taxes and increase the size of government, we should look within our own general fund budget and make the necessary changes and reduce the budget. How many times have we seen that increasing the size of government gets us anywhere better? I believe it's not the case. I am very much supportive of government, but a smaller, simpler, more efficient government, not a larger government that's inefficient. No matter what happens with this tax increase, let's say it generates $5 million, it does not mean that the $28 million today that's in that budget that we have budgeted for the police department will be used for the police department quite easily. Millions can be sliced off the backside of that. How many times have we seen a tax that was supposed to be dedicated for one thing, and then the backside sliced off? And that's clearly what's possible here, and you'll start seeing more costs now to our pension obligations. It's simply the wrong decision. You should look within before we ask you to pony up more money and increase the size of local government.
To be clear, the city council cannot raise your taxes. And Measure F is not us raising your taxes. There were many people in this community asking for the right to vote on this, and that's what we unanimously voted to do. Patrick made it very clear that this isn't something he support, but he did support your right to choose whether you want to pay more for law enforcement or not. There's no secret that we don't have enough police. We have less police than we had, you know, tens of thousands of people ago in population. We have, we don't have enough police, we don't have enough firefighters. I think that's indisputable. In the language for Measure F, it says that this money will be added to the police department, not instead of present funding. It's in the language for the ballot measure. The words are sublimate versus supplement. And I would also like to point out that 1/4% is 25 cents on a $10 purchase. It's $2.50 on a $100 taxable item. We don't pay taxes on food, we don't pay taxes on necessities. It also, over half of this money will be generated by visitors to our city, and they have an interest in our city being safer also. Part of this money will be spent for consequences. It'll be spent for either more bed space, for work release programs, and we all know that's what's seriously missing now. We don't have the money in the city of Reading for this. This is the only way we're going to increase our police department at this time, is with Measure F. And I hope you'll all give it a lot of serious thought and look at the facts and not just emotional arguments. Thank you.
The government's answer is always raise taxes. That's the answer. We give a raise to our top people, $1 million, and within 10 minutes then say, we're going to have to have some more police, whereas the money, raise a tax. That's not the way you look at it. When you raise a tax, you take $5 million out of your economy, it circulates two and a half times within your economy. So $12.5 million is going to come out of the businesses here. That is money that is going to create sales tax coming back to the city, so they're actually taking money from their general fund when they do this. So you've got to be careful. The other thing is, people don't pay it. Right now, in the top 500 people at the Board of Equalization, there is a business over here on Bocelli Lane who owes $727,000 in sales tax. It's not sales tax on $720,000 of income, it's sales tax on $10 million. They aren't paying it. It's not being collected. And the Board of Equalization refuses to tell me how much more is owed in the city. I went to the fourth floor of their building, and they said, no, we are not going to tell you. And I've turned it over to government officials, because I'm tired of beating my head on the wall, and they're trying to get that number. How much is not being collected? If you raise a tax and you don't collect it, what good is it? It's not going to give you anything. We also have to look at the police department. Just because there's 98 sworn officers doesn't mean they're all available. I've gone back and I talked to the chief about this. We need to know number of police hours that we need to fund, because there are people who are on disability and they don't count. There are people who want overtime that don't. We need to figure out how many officers we really need, and then come up with a budget and fund them, so we have a full shift where they want them and how many people they want out there. It's not just actual number of officers. You've got to go back, you've got to do the math on every subject.
Now, it is true, I did support putting that quarter cent on the sales tax or on the ballot, and I did that because council member Cad did something very brilliantly, and if you watched that council meeting, what was going to happen is they were going to have a dedicated sales tax to the police department of a half percent. With two council members, myself and Gary Cad, not supporting that, that would have failed. They need a four-fifths vote to put that on the ballot. If that vote were to be taken, it would have been voted down, they would have come back and put a half-cent, non-specific tax on the ballot. Gary Cad quickly made sure that it was, reduced the amount from a half percent to a quarter percent, and made sure that it was a dedicated tax, because it takes a 66% threshold to pass. It was a very wise move, very smart move from a man that's been around the block a time or two, and so that is why I did that. It has a much higher threshold, and I truly believe that if the citizens look at this, they should not support it.
Any more rebuttals? No? Next question, Red? Maybe just repeat it twice so I can understand it each time.
In a recent conversation that was had with Chief Paletti, he said his greatest concern was going to be the inability to hire new police officers within a five-year time span due to retirement commitments. Taking into consideration that RPD has some of the highest average pay in the state, what is your specific solution to overcome this problem? Okay. In a recent conversation with Chief Paletti, he stated his greatest concern was going to be the inability to hire new police officers within a five-years time span due to retirement commitments of retiring officers. Taking in consideration that RPD has some of the highest average pay per officer in the state, what is your specific solution to overcome this problem?
Who wants to go? Mike?
Okay, I've had a lot of conversations with the chief also, and the number-one thing he wants that he can get quickest is the CSO officers to free up the sworn officers who are currently doing some of that work, so he can immediately get some of those people. That's the first thing that we need to do, because yes, it's going to take a little while to go through the checks and all that, and there are background checks for CSO officers too, but that is the fastest way to get people in that department who are freeing up the sworn officers. Will it be enough to solve the whole problem? No, but it's the fastest way that we can look at it. And again, you have to go back to the number of officers that you're going to need. And when you go back to average pay, you also have to look at the overtime. What are they being paid, and how much are they actually being paid? There's two different things. There's a rate that they're being paid, and then a lot of them want overtime. So what is that pay? In the private world, overtime is a four-letter word. But when you have these liabilities that you come along with in the city, it's not. And so it's very, very easy, you know, to go out there and say, we can't find, we have to start looking, we don't, we can't say we're the highest average wage, because that's not exactly true. And some of them, you know, some of the younger ones want overtime, some of the older ones don't. And we have to look at who's coming off of, on disability, going off to the disability, and then we will free up the money there. But I think that this can be done, and if we have the volunteers to go in there and help the CSO officers along there and start doing some of this reporting, you know, we can take care of the situation.
Well, one of the problems we talked about, number one, is that crime is a serious issue, and added to that now with Chief Paletti's concern about the number of retirees. But remember a couple points. One is, since the state, the retirement modifications done in January of 2013, those hired after January 1, 2013, will have a different retirement benefit package. So that, and plus, I agree, well, you should hire, consider hiring more CSO officers, as I have also talked with Chief Paletti, and that is one way to hire more CSO officers at less rate than you would hire sworn officers, then you can return more sworn officers into the street, which I think is a deterrent to crime in our community. So also, what I have heard other council candidates talk about is looking at a strategic plan. So I would encourage Chief Paletti, besides his current plan that he's put forward, is that we look at more of a strategic plan for hiring officers. We need more sworn officers, more CSO officers. We also need more people to assist with code enforcement. There are many levels of what officers we need. We need more community policing officers. So all of that should be evaluated with regard to the retirements that are coming along, and so that we have increased force that we need for protection of our community, because we've been understaffed in the police department for a long time.
Read that question again, Red.
In a recent conversation with Chief Paletti, he stated his greatest concern was going to be the inability to hire new police officers within the five-years time span due to retirement commitments to retiring officers. Taking into consideration that RPD has some of the highest average pay in the state, what is your specific solution to overcome this problem?
So there are many parts to this, but let's first take a look and break it down and analyze just how we got to the problem today. We have to look at the history. So over the last 30 years, 4.85% raise per year for public safety. So I'll say that again, 4.85% raise for a 30-year period gets us to where we're at here today. 65% of the general fund today is eaten up in police and fire. 65% of the general fund for a fairly small group of people. When you take a look at the 3% at 50 or 55 formula, that is ultimately where the problem is, and we must get back to about the 2,000 formula, the 2% at 55. There was no political will. I can tell you, me and council member Cad, we fight these types of issues day in and day out. Getting back to a formula that we can afford and live with gets your personnel problem solved. That's where we're at today. It's that we cannot, we cannot afford our public safety officers at the rate that they're at, because it's been said that we have to match all the other cities in the state of California. They can't afford it either, and neither can we. That's where tough negotiation must be done. We're still saying these guys deserve good retirements, and a 70% final pay retirement is a good retirement. We're not saying they didn't earn it, because they have, but we're not, but what we can't do is live outside of our means, and the 3% at 50 or 55 formula is unsustainable for any city in America. But yet, that's what we're still doing, and it takes more political will. And we're close, we're close there. Right now, you've seen a lot of the 3-2 votes. The two fiscal conservatives are trying to get us to where we need to go, to get the staffing levels where we deserve and where we need, but it takes three to count, to get things done at City Hall. As you know, there's five council members, it takes three. I never thought it would be so difficult to count to three in my life, but it has been very difficult. But the answers are right there. We're not living within our means.
So last night, I was putting my daughter to bed, my eight-year-old daughter, and I said, do you have any advice for me when I go to this debate tomorrow night? And she said, Dad, just make sure you remember to smile. So I was sitting here, and I don't think I've smiled a lot tonight. So right now, if you guys run into my family, remind my wife and my children that I smiled at least one time tonight, okay? So this is a very important question. And I think, again, it goes back to what are we actually trying to accomplish on November 4th? On November 4th, we're trying to hire five board of directors, who are going to set policy through our city manager, and then from our city manager, it's going to go down to all of our department heads. And there's going to be a number of issues that are going to come up, just like this specific question here, of, you know, how are we going to address the shortage of hires, and how are we going to balance that with obligations and promises that we've made? And I think it goes back to, again, we all are a product of our life experiences. We're all a product of whatever it might be we do for our career. And I've always made comments to my employees and people I've worked with, that I wanted to work for an organization that is proactive, not reactive. I'm very proud of the work I've done over the last 10 years, to not only grow Weaver Lumber through the recession, but to be able to retain so many of my employees, and to be able to articulate to them how difficult it is during this recession, but if you stick in there with me, I will make promises to you, and when the economy gets better, we're both going to prosper as a result. I think it's very, very important that as a board of directors, as we set policy, we balance, we show balance, we absolutely have to show respect to our employees. Anyone that has run an organization without your employees, you cannot run anything in this. And I am very, very proud of the employees, the directors, the managers, that I've been able to meet throughout the city of Reading over the last year, and I think that's what it comes to. And we've got to decide if we're proactive or reactive. Thank you.
So the way the city council runs, and Brent alluded to it, is you need three votes, and the city council employs two people. It employs the city attorney and employs the city manager. The council does not employ the police chief. I don't know how to run a police department. I'm not a policeman. Nobody appears a policeman, they don't know how to run a police department. The answer to the problem of the chief, and by the way, I think if you asked him, he'd probably say every one of the things on his list is a big problem he'd like to solve. But it's a huge problem of how are you going to get new people to come in, and what are you going to do? The answer to that problem will come from Chief Paletti, who's running the department and what his suggestions are, and Kurt Starman, who's the manager and the financial manager for the whole city, and they need to come together and say, here's five ways, here's six ways, here's eight ways we can try to do this and come back to the council. Now, you say to yourself, why haven't they done that? Chief Paletti's been there a long time, and this is not a new problem of how we're going to get new people. Anybody can see, you need new people to come in, in any kind of business as you go along. Why hasn't it happened up until now? Why haven't had this discussion? Hasn't been publicized? I'll tell you why they haven't had it. Because three people on the council have not said to the city manager, we need this discussion. He only does what he's told to go do. And that's fine, that's his job, but that hasn't happened with the current council. That is an important reason why you need to elect new city council members, to get a new group dynamic, to get a new way to look at these problems and to deal with them. And I think if you do that in November, you'll come up with various solutions, then we'll debate them, we'll find what's the most appropriate, and we'll take the right answer. Thank you.
The million dollar, the million, or the salary, the highest salary statement, I think, is confusing, not accurate. What we have is 43 overtime shifts every week that have to be picked up by the officers that we have. We have nine officers that are injured. So our officers might be, as Mr. Quinn explained, might be making more money, because so many of them are working overtime, that's not their base salary. We hear the same kind of arguments about the fire department. A police captain makes $72,000. A police captain makes $72,000 a year. But we don't have enough firefighters, so they're always on call, they're always working overtime, so their salary at the end of the year is more, but it's because we don't have enough of them. The chief is hiring new officers now. He recently gave us a course of action, which is his plan. If he had two and a half more million dollars, he would do X, Y, and Z. If he had five million, which is the amount that would be generated coincidentally by Major F, the quarter-end sales tax, he would hire 17 new police officers. The first thing he would hire are community service officers. There's no disagreement from anyone about that. But what you need to remember is that even community service officers, it takes 16 weeks after you hire them to train them. That's just part of their training, 16 weeks. It would take a year just to hire community service officers. So when you talk about spending reserves to solve this problem, you can see what a dilemma that is, and spending that much money, investing that much money in officers. We have a good police force. We don't lose lawsuits because our officers use aggressive force. They're well-trained, they're, they do a good job, and we need to, we need to hire more people like that. Thank you.
Rebutts? Do you have rebuttal, Mike?
I think it's time to start looking at how we do everything in the city. And one thing that's really important is we're self-insured. So when we have disabilities and things like that, where does it come from? We need to go back and see if that's a good policy. A lot of these policies that we set in effect when we were, everything was going good, the price of housing was going up, sales tax was going up, everything was going up, is fine. But how do you deal with it when it stops going up? That's when you set these long-term budgets, and I'm dealing that with REU, they said, "Well, it's in the budget, and the budget's a five-year budget." Oh, that was a five-year budget set in good times, and it's not good times anymore. So I don't agree with these long-term budgets, especially in very volatile times. But it's very, very important to go through every single policy that you've got. And if maybe self-insurance is not good anymore, maybe that's costing us too much, we've got to review those. It's been a long time since somebody looked at that.
I meet with Chief Paletti weekly, and we go over a broad spectrum of things that we can do, and I think we're getting some, some very good ideas coming forward. In a few weeks, we'll report back to the city council. I believe that Chief Paletti is quite possibly the finest chief that the city of Reading most likely will ever see. And that's a tall statement, because we've had some pretty good chief police's. I like his aggressive style, he's the age that he wants to stay here for a long term and set policies and set directions, I should say, for his department. And, and I've always told him, if he does things that's good for the department, good for the city, the council will always follow. But that does not alleviate our job to do our fiduciary responsibility to live within our means. He knows how to run the department, no question. But let's, let's give those officers to him and live within our means, and that's the difference. We have a job to do at council. We've got to manage that budget. He's got a job to run this city, he's very capable, and we all support him in that. But we have a tough job back at City Hall, and if we work together, we'll figure it out.
Any more rebuttals on that? Well, I guess we're going to go to the audience question and answer session here. And we've got Robert on one side and Terry on the other, and anybody who wants to come up and ask a question, you know, again, we'll keep it to questions and not statements, address all of the council, our potential council members, and the rules apply the same. Whoever, you can do the two minutes, you can decline to answer a question in a one-minute rebuttal. Okay?
And we'll be going from side to side, so if he gets stacked up over there, we want to make it even, so it goes side to side here.
And try to keep it pithy if you can, in the interest of not going till 9 o'clock.
And only issues that pertain to the city council.
Yes.
This isn't about county issues or measures, this is about what pertains to city council. Very good. Thank you.
I want to direct this to Mr. Rater. It's been said that you're in favor of Common Core, and has, on the board, has got that into Enterprise School District. Why do you feel that that system of education is important for our children?
Well, actually, it's, Common Core is a state-approved program right now, and it's not really a city of Reading issue. But I will answer it with my other hat, which is an elected school trustee, I'd be happy to try and answer that for you. Common Core was developed by a group of educators and state governors. It was not a federal, a federal program that was implemented from the top down. So the states have decided whether they're going to approve it or not, and individual school districts are implementing that. The most important thing about Common Core is what we want for our students is to be the best prepared that they can be when they leave high school. And from the kindergarten through 12th grade, what you're going to see is that they have focused on English and math. And for English, for example, we want our students to be better critical thinkers. That's really the biggest change that you're going to see in Common Core. And for math, they want to make sure that each year, every student has achieved the level that they need to before they move on. And that's almost like the simplest way of explaining the difference between the previous curriculum and the new curriculum called Common Core. I believe that it's the best for our students, and it will help prepare our students to be, to move to college or career and be competitive in the world that they need to be in.
Anybody want to rebut that, Mike?
Common Core history. World War II, the biggest offenders were the American people who put the Japanese in the internment camps. Go read the his, go read the history of Common Core, you're not going to want to hear it. We are being blamed for what happened. So you've got to, you've got to look through everything. Have you seen the new way they do math in Common Core? Where did that come from? It, it, that's ridiculous. And, and they tried this before, they tried this. My daughter was in Enterprise High School, when they decided to put all these programs together, and they said, "Okay, your math is going along with your English. You have, you have to write a problem, a math problem, in English class, and then take it over to the math and solve it." You know, that was a horrible failure, a horrible failure. Remember, the people who built the computers learned reading, writing, arithmetic. The people who built Chastity Dam had a slide rule. You don't need to reinvent it, you need to reinforce these issues. And they don't have to read and write, they don't have to do things correctly anymore. Look at the true Common Core, it's dangerous.
So I commend Kristen for getting up and answering that question, because it was really not a city council-related question, and it was very easy to not answer that question. So I just wanted to thank Kristen for answering that. So I have four young children that are in school, my wife's a school teacher, it's something we're paying very, very close attention to. But at the end of the day, I just, I think I needed to stand up and thank Kristen for answering that question.
Anybody else want to join in on that? I apologize, but I, you know, you went forward, you went for it, and, you know, I didn't want to jump in and stop anything, so, but let's try to stick to the issues.
Well, at least they answered the question.
Ah, that's, I got to commend them, I mean, they answered the question.
At least they answered the question.
So, again, I didn't, I want to make it clear, everybody has the first two minutes, and then rebuttal. I didn't mean to say that you were rebutting either, Mike. So when the question comes up, everybody gets two minutes, and then if somebody wants to rebut that two minutes, then they get one minute. So just to make sure you're clear on that. I'm sorry?
Yes.
Well, that was the general idea, I was kind of surprised that she answered it. Yeah, sorry.
My silence means I don't believe it's a city council issue, so.
Okay, I have a simple question, I think this will kind of lend us a little bit of what each council candidate's thinking. My question is, what is the best recent city council decision that's been made, and what's one of the worst? And that's everybody.
I want this one. So I think absolutely, in the time I've been following the city council, the worst decision I have seen is our not seizing the opportunity to buy Civic Plaza, the building across from City Hall, when we had the opportunity to buy it. We could have acquired that building for roughly $2.6 million, and sure, there would have been some additional funds to go in there, to remodel it, to make it work. But when you consider what we could have bought that building for, and then what we ended up buying on Avtech Parkway for roughly $12 million, we would be having a much different conversation today about public safety and so many of our other issues, not to mention the decades and decades of synergy that we lost with REU, or whatever other city service could have been in that building. So for me, that was just a critical misstep that we had. And for anyone that's going to stand there and say, "Well, Brent, you're just Monday morning quarterbacking," I was in that exact situation at the height of the recession when moss lumber became available. It was not a good time to invest and buy additional lumber yards. I did it, it was a great opportunity for myself, my family, perhaps it's an opportunity that might only come around once in my lifetime. As far as decision that's been made that is a great decision, I look at Big League Dreams. Here is a community asset that we have, that brings tourists into our community, that my employees at the lumberyard get to use, we have another outfit that manages it for us, and each month, we get a check for it. That, to me, is a good example. Thank you.
I will agree with Brent on that last one, and so I won't belabor the point to add to, because Brent really summarized well, that the decision not to buy the building across the street was really, I think, at the time, a lot of people were concerned that that was not the right decision, and we know now it was really not the right decision. I think one of the good decisions that the city of Reading has made, one of the things I agree with, is the privatization of some of the program, you know, some of the operations. For example, the Civic Auditorium, when you look at the, the amount of funds that they needed, that they were spending, all the general fund that they couldn't afford, and now it's turned into a much different circumstance for the city of Reading. In addition, it would be the library also, and the way that it's run, which is a private, in a privatization or a partnership with the county and the city. So there's two examples where they've made good decisions that helped with their bottom line, that benefited the city of Reading.
I'll make it a 3-0. I, I too concur, the building across the street. And I think right now, particularly because of the construction of the new jail, people, a lot of angst with the REU staff about having to move out to Airport Road. No one is thrilled about the final solution, although it was the only solution that we've had, the only opportunity we've had to move the police out of the police station, which is, you know, a pit. We're going to have to have a brick sale when we finally get our officers out of there. But I think on a daily basis, someone mentions that if only we had that building across the street, and certainly for a much less investment. I was not in the council then, I'm grateful I wasn't part of that decision. As for best, I, the one that is most in my mind right now is the fact that we had a 5-0 vote to allow you to vote for more police and more public safety. The community will decide. And I couldn't agree more with Patrick, that two-thirds vote is really a challenge, but the community gets to decide. We don't have many options, there are just a lot of problems in our community, it's disrupting all of us. I think everyone in town is, is scared, or annoyed, or both. And this is an option for a solution that the community gets to choose. Every member of our community gets to decide whether they want to pay for more law enforcement or not. Thank you.
The Plaza Building across the street was available. The problem is, the city wanted to purchase it for the wrong reason. They wanted to purchase it for the electric utility. We didn't need any building for the electric utility. What we needed was a police facility, and the chief absolutely refused on that building. I fought him hard on that, I was on that committee, and we looked at many other buildings as well, and they refused all of them. Every one of the fine buildings that were out there available for pennies on the dollar, the chief at that time refused every one of them. And we should have overrode it. Council chose to put on, on for discussion to buy that Plaza Building for the utility. We don't need any room, the utility already had their room. Moving the utility today to Airport Road is just simply a bad decision. It's a bad decision. They already had their home, it's already done. Only building we needed was for the police. The worst decision really recently was violating your First Amendment right in front of the library, and costing the taxpayers $285,000. Horrible decision to violate your First Amendment right. And I think one of the more recent, better decisions is council decided that we should look at some volunteers to help the department out, the Reading Police Department.
Does that on purpose? When I first started running for council, I was hoping it'd be a campaign about jobs, because I think jobs is one of the most important things that we need in the community. The community grows, it moves forward. If you don't have jobs and people coming here and producing things and selling things, you won't get sales tax, you won't get, have people out buying houses, you won't get increased property tax and transient occupancy tax. So jobs is the most important thing. I have a good decision and a bad decision on jobs. Before I do that, I will say this, and it's not one specific decision. The county, the city's general reserve unallocated money has gone up in the last three years, and it's gone up substantially. And I want to commend the previous council for all the actions they've undertaken to increase the reserve. That's an important thing to do, it's a good thing to do, it's not one action in specific, that's good. On the jobs, bad, they refuse to consider lowering or reducing in some fashion the impact fees that they charge people to build in the town. And they, they had cockamamie logic in doing it. They said, "We can't lower the fees because we'll lose money." You haven't lost any money, because nobody's paying the fees that are too high. Good decision. The EDC is a good entity, and Mark LaSalle's at the EDC spent a long time trying to get big manufacturing to come in and fill up Stillwater. What he's really doing now is he's getting young entrepreneurs to do startup companies. And we have angel investors in town, we have people that are interested in that, that's where the future of Reading is going to lie. There are 50 or 100 companies here, you'd be shocked and amazed if you saw what they are. I've seen their presentations. That's a good decision, and to have Mark help and support that and grow that community, I applaud the council for doing that.
I'm going to give my good and bad, and then later on, I'll give a rebuttal to some of this. The voice of the people. What was good? 5-0, they said, "Let's put the tax on the ballot." Okay, they, they came to a compromise, actually saw people work together, they said, "It's not going to be half," they came together, they said, "Give the people a voice." But then they also moved the time that you get to speak to the end of the meeting. They don't want to hear your voice. And that is, that is completely wrong, I'm sorry, we have to take the time. If we're going to run the city council, we need to listen, but we need to listen to more than just there. When you show up to the meeting and they're going to have an agenda item, yes, you get to speak, you don't have to wait till the end of the meeting, that's for general comments. But you can speak to an item just before they're going to vote on it. There's a time there, it's too late. You need to do that three or four meetings before, so you can get people together and you can get opinions together, so they get to hear from you during the whole process that they're putting together, because of the time they get that night. Their minds are made up, you're not going to change it. So we need to have more public opinion. That's my good and bad.
Someone agreed partially with Mr. DeQuisto in that impact fees are very high today. If you look back at the history, we doubled the impact fees in 2002, and then we doubled again in 2004, based on future growth expectations that never occurred. So not too many years ago, we reduced the impact fees for single-family homes by one-third, and we did it again for 100 permits and then 200 permits. And what it did was it created $16 million back into our community and 750 jobs, and it put people back to work. Government getting out of the way, letting you get busy and work. Recently, I brought that idea back up again to do it for 100 permits. I recently said, "Let's reduce those impact fees by one-third," and it was voted down 3-2. Councilmember Cad supported this, along with myself, Councilmember Sullivan essentially killed that idea, along with the other, our other two colleagues. And the impact fees are now close hovering to around $40,000 before you can move dirt.
Any more rebuttals on that, Mike?
Okay, rebuttal. Big League Dreams, what a joke. I'm sorry, it was a nice idea when it began, and when we signed the contract with the people, they said they weren't going to build another Big League Dreams near us, we were going to get all of those ballgames and all of those tournaments, and you know what? They went and built one. And they took all of the tournaments, we don't get anywhere near the amount of tournaments. And then they said, "We don't have any money," so we alleviated some of the payments. Have you been to Big League Dreams? How many people have been there lately? What's it look like? It is rundown. They are not taking care of it. And it's not theirs. It's not theirs. This is an outsourcing to a company that doesn't really care. Because all they, they got it all built, they got all their fees, they got their, the money that they were going to get for using the name Big League Dreams, and then they went and built one where it's a lot cooler and they could get a lot more tournaments. And one of our city council people- And one of our city council people followed the company down there. That was a joke. And when we outsource, why are we outsourcing? The only time you should outsource is when you can keep the jobs in the city, not send them somewhere else, and not have any benefit.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? We got one minute, or we want to go to the next question? All right. Let's go to the next question over here on the left.
Mr. DeCristo just about answered this, but it seems to me that if we have more jobs and we're friendlier towards business in this town, that we would have more revenues and we'd have less crime, and it's been proven out through history. And my question is, what are you going to do to make this town more friendly towards businesses and lower the unemployment rate, which in turn would lower the crime rate, instead of, you know, us all talking about the public sector and raising taxes and all that?
I won't repeat what I just said, but I think maybe you should run for city council. You have to make the options for the business and the startup cost for the business less. Doesn't necessarily have to be zero, but it has to be less than what it is right now. It takes over two years to get a permit in Chasta County from start to finish. So how'd you like to start a business? And you say, "Well, when are you going to start making money?" And your wife says, "Well, it'll be a little while." "Well, how long is it going to be?" "Well, it's going to be two years." "Well, what are we supposed to do in the interim? How's that supposed to happen?" That's another example of the attitude and the culture at City Hall, and it starts from the top down, from the three on the council and the city manager down to the building department. They can implement a policy that says, "Our policy is, if you come in and you want to build a single-family home that's 3,000 square feet or less, our policy is that within nine months, or six months, or whatever number they think is reasonable, we will see to it that our requirements are met and you can go forward." To my knowledge, they don't have that. I don't think they care to have it. That's a business-friendly attitude, which doesn't exist here today. Like we said about lowering the impact fees, that's pretty clearly business-friendly. The EDC and helping the startup companies. I've made a suggestion. Take the old city hall when the police move out and sell it to a startup company. Sell it for a dollar and put a deed restriction in that says, "You've got to run an incubator so you can have young companies come here. You've got to fix it up. You've got to meet our standards. We won't charge you any fees." You put your money in that way. Will that help? Sure, it'll help. How could it not help? What's the worst that happens? You put it up for bid and nobody buys it. Well, that means nobody would have bought it anyway, so you haven't lost anything. There's lots of things the city can do if they have a little ingenuity and a little outside-the-box thinking to encourage jobs, and that's important.
So ask a business person. I would say, first of all, the role of local government. Can they solve all of our problems? Of course they can't. The only role that I see local government can do to help myself as a business owner, or help you if you own a business, is to help get some of the bureaucracy, the hurdles, those things that slow us down from doing what we do best, which is to come up with new ideas, new products, to look for new niche markets. So I actually have spent time building residential, commercial projects. One of the things that we need to make sure that we do a very good job of as we move forward with welcoming new businesses to our community is they need to feel that we want them here. They need to know, when they send their scouts up and they meet with, you know, building department, or they meet with city council members, they need to know they are wanted in this community. When I think of all of the different issues that we are facing here, you know, the lifestyle transients, the homeless, people that are really down on their luck, how do we pay for those services? We pay for them on the backs of business. We need to make sure we support our existing businesses, don't enact policies that are going to hurt them, and make sure we attract additional businesses here. And I think one of the best ways to do that is get people on the council that have run businesses. Vote for me on November 4th.
Well, this is how business-friendly City of Reading is. Not too long ago, Rod Rodriguez II had financing for $168 million twin condos on the Bluffs off of Hempstead Drive. City council turned that down. That was a 4-1 vote at the time, before Gary Cad was on. $168 million project that he had financing for that would have occurred right here in the center of Reading, and we turned him down, 4-1. I was the only one that stood there and said, "This would be a fantastic project. It would put a lot of money and a lot of jobs in the economy today that's missing." It's a culture change that needs to occur at City Hall, and it's from the top to the bottom. Today, we're known for being one of the least friendly cities in California. We rank one of the worst in being friendly. We're not open for business. That's the term I use. And anybody that goes there, if you're one of the favored few, may be, but for most of the small and medium-sized guys, it takes forever, it's extremely costly, and after they build here once, they say they'll never build here again. That's disappointing for me as a council member. It's what I've tried to change over these last seven and a half years. With the right council members, a culture change will begin, and I'll be very happy to be a part of that.
They literally run businesses out of town. Kenworth, over on Turn Creek Road. City of Ready representative went in there and says, "We don't want you greaseballs here." Do you know how much sales tax was generated and how many jobs were generated at that trucking company? When they sold trucks, $200, $250,000; the trailers, $80, $250,000; the repairs that they did on all the trucks going down the road? I worked for Emmerbach Cascade Logging. We had 160 logging trucks. I know how much a repair on a transmission and an engine is, and the parts generated sales tax. They said, "Leave." They didn't want it. They were greaseballs. That's the attitude that you've got here. If they don't want you, they're going to get you out of here, and they're not going to help you. When you start a business, you start paying the rent the first day, and you start putting money into that business. And then they come back and they say, "Oh, no, we don't want you to do that. We want you to do it this way." They make people literally tear out things that they have put in and do it over. It is not the city's business what color you paint the inside of your building. It's not the city's business what you put in there. And here's an even worse case. When the tax collector shows up, we have a guy who, over on Turn Creek, put $150,000 into his building at leasehold improvements, which he wasn't going to be able to walk away with. The guy walks in and he says, "That's $300,000 worth of improvement you did." He said, "Here's my receipts. I spent $150,000." He says, "Yeah, but you did $300,000, so there's your tax bill." That is ridiculous when we're doing this to people. You cannot inhibit somebody. It's their responsibility to do things right. They're going to do it right. They want their permits moved quickly, because time is money when you're in business, and you're borrowing that. And you can fall so far in debt that you will not get back out. This is not a friendly business attitude at all. $18,000 for a restaurant to hook up to the sewer, and then you pay the sewer fees? I mean, there's just fee after fee after fee after fee after fee, and it just isn't working.
You've heard a pretty good case here for what we've done wrong. I think always, in any business, in any service, you always need to strive to do better. But I will tell you, first of all, from my personal experience, my husband and I bought a house that was way more of a fixer-upper than we ever imagined a few years ago. My husband won't let me use his name. We were both named after our dads. His name is Dick Roseberry, so the permits... I wasn't running for city council. No one in the building department knew me, and I have to tell you, I went in there with an attitude, because I'd always heard, "The county isn't so bad. The city is just awful." Well, they did everything but give me a foot massage while I was in there. They could not have been more helpful. When our plumber came, there was something with the meter at the street. He called them at 5:00 at night. At 6:00 the next morning, the water department was out there to fix it. When the roof had to be replaced, there was an electrical connection that was bad. They couldn't continue with the roofing. They called the electric department. There was someone there in 15 minutes. And I think that is the standard thing they do when people are in a jam. We hear, I hear all the time about the successes, about the businesses that felt they were helped, and I'm very glad that I hear those. We have, as someone up here just mentioned, an amazing number of young startup businesses in our town, and those are people who chose to move here. Now with technology, people, many people can work anywhere, they can create jobs anywhere, and people are doing that in spades. Young people are moving here because they want to live here, because of our trails, because of our lifestyle. I talked to someone on Hempstead. He said, you know, they go kayaking during lunch. I mean, they think this is God's country, and they can afford to buy a house, unlike people in the Bay Area, which is kind of the noted technology sector. So I think we're an undiscovered gem for young people who care about how they live and want to live where the power rates are low and reliable in a beautiful city.
I think I remember what the question was, and I think we've taken a few divergent paths here since the question was first asked. I think it was somewhere along the lines of, "How can we improve the economy? How can we provide for more jobs?" And we heard a lot about different things that might impede growth in our community. I can tell you that my personal experience in my business is, well, number one, I've grown, built and grown a business for 28 years, and the work that I do is primarily in Sacramento, and I navigate five different bureaucracies. So it's familiar for me to understand that there are bureaucracies at every level of government. It takes three years to build a school from start to finish, but there are reasons that you have rules. It's so that our children are safe in the buildings that the architect designs and the builder builds. The same reason we have rules in our home construction and our building businesses. Certainly, I agree with Francie that in any process, in the ones I work in in the state, is we want it to be friendly to the consumer, friendly to our businesses, friendly to people who want to build and renovate homes. And to that end, I would support any way that we can improve that process. I think they've made some improvements at City Hall, you know, with the building department and reviewing and working with the plans and plan checks and inspections. I support making sure that our homes are safe when they're built, so that when you buy one from someone who's done the renovations, you know that you're buying something that you want to put your family in. Back to the idea about jobs and the economy, certainly when the city has an ability to provide incentives through the REU rate structures or any other incentives that we can for providing greater jobs and business opportunities, I will disagree with our candidate DeCristo. In the building down at the old police station, the first thing we ought to do is not give it away, number one. And the City of Reading has no business giving away any property, even selling it for a dollar. That's prime real estate that if we looked at the development of downtown, could be a key piece to providing a really meaningful development for downtown. So I would first like to see that before we give it away to anybody, even if it starts jobs.
Is that the... Before we go on any farther, I wanted to kind of change the rules for everybody, but I want to make sure you're all good with it before we do. In the interest of time, as we're going along and we're seeing the questionnaires come up here, can we make the answers one-minute and 30-second rebuttals for everybody, and we'll shorten it up a little bit? Think of it like a Jeopardy! bonus round, you know? Okay, very good. So who's next? Jan?
Recently, the city council voted to move public comment for non-agendized items to the end of the meeting. I would like to know each of you's opinion about that decision.
So this is a question, for me, I have not put a lot of time and thought into it, and I'll tell you why. For the past year, you know, I, maybe somebody should have told me not to start the campaign so early, but I felt like I had a lot to learn and develop, so that's why we came out as early as we did. And we also wanted to shine a light on all the issues that were taking place in all of our different neighborhoods. That's why we launched our campaign from South City Park, to highlight a community asset that I used as a child that we're no longer using today. And so I will just make this one promise on this issue, because I think it's come up for the last three or four forums. If I am fortunate enough to be elected on November 4th, I will look at the issue, I'll weigh both sides of it, and then I'll work with the new council, decide what the right decision is to move forward on it. Thanks.
Well, this was just a bad, a bad situation that occurred. It was a bad decision, and the reason why is because, just take a look at the history. We had the public comment period at the back years ago, and when we finished the new city hall, $27 million new building, we wondered why no one came forward to speak, because it's at a time uncertain at the end of the meeting. And so you didn't know whether that'd be 8:00, 9:00, 2:00. You did not know. So we, me, we put it forward at the beginning of the meeting, and we got lots of people commenting. In fact, we got Mr. Clark right over here to comment. And Mr. Clark is a dedicated person that speaks, and he comes time and time again. And I really believe that, most likely, councilmember Sullivan and a few of her colleagues deliberately moved Mr. Clark and any other speaker that spoke ill of the city to the rear, because we knew what it would do. It would squelch public comment. By putting it towards the end of the meeting at an unknown time, that's why they did it. That's absolutely why they did it. There is no other reason. That building is for you and only for the public. That's who paid for it.
Okay. I definitely agree that citizens have the right to be spoken and be heard, and I'm a great listener, whether it's at the beginning, the middle, or the end, and we should guarantee those rights for our citizens. I agree with candidate Weaver that it's an issue that should be brought back to the city council in November, December, after the election, so I would support that.
We actually, when we made that decision, that was part of the decision, that we would revisit it in December. And certainly, Mr. Clark has not been the slightest bit dismayed by staying to the end of the meeting. It gives him the advantage of listening to all of the staff reports, being more informed. He always stayed till the end, and we always wait, and we listen to anyone that wants to speak, and we listen politely and attentively. If you want to speak on an issue that we are making a decision on, you have the right to speak, and I would argue that we do not have our minds made up in advance. The Brown Act prevents us from discussing things before meetings, and I think we are all very honorable about that. So we get our staff reports on Thursday. We listen to the testimony. I've certainly had my mind changed by information that was given at council meetings, and people are still showing up and speaking, and we encourage that. We're polite to people. We all sit and listen attentively, and whatever time people speak, we will continue to do that. Thank you.
I think I made my opinion pretty clear earlier, but the meetings notice may come out on a Thursday, and then they vote on a Tuesday, but if you listen to the way they talk about why they're going to vote, their minds are not made up that night. And so we need to be a part of every part. It's your city. We are asking to be representatives of you, to give a direction to the staff to lead the city, to lead your city.
It's an important issue, but I don't think it's the most important issue that we face in the election. On a scale of 1 to 10, it's about a 2 or 3. I think crime is a 10. I think jobs are probably an 8, and I think that we should focus our priorities that way. Having said that, God gave us two ears and one mouth. We should listen twice as long as we speak, and remember that. If you have a problem, and the issue that I've heard, and this is an issue for me, someone says, "I can't stay late, and I don't know how long the meeting's going to last." That's a fair concern. You call any council person, and the rules allow you to have that council person make a motion and say, "I would like to have Joe talk first for his open comment period, because Joe has to leave." And if the majority of the council says that's fine, they can create the agenda for that night to solve that issue. So I think that's a reasonable way to take care of it, where you don't take anybody's rights away. I also think if I'm elected, that we ought to be able to work something out to everybody's satisfaction.
You know, Joe shouldn't have to ask if he can speak at a public meeting. There was no trouble with having the public comment period at the beginning of those council meetings. We didn't have it. It was just simply a few council members did not like the content of a few speakers. That's all it was. We had no trouble with it. We'd done it that way for quite some time, only until recently did they decide to make that change. Now, we have lots of important issues. All the issues, that's our job. We listen to every one of them. This is one issue. It's as important to, most likely, Mr. Clark, as any issue.
Any rebuttals? Are we on to the next question?
I'm not sure what I did to the Girl Scouts, but I think Ms. MacArthur has something that I did to them, because that's the reason this meeting was changed to the rear. The other thing is, the mayor has now, whoever's acting as mayor, has now taken it upon themselves to shuffle the cards and put me to the last.
Are we got, do we have a question? Do we have, do we have a question?
Well, yeah, the state constitution says that a law may not restrain or abridge liberty of speech. And I'm just asking if these new, whoever's ever elected, are they going to be shuffling the cards and putting whoever they disagree with to the last on the cards? I put my speaker card in first. Are you gonna, if you don't like what I say, are you gonna take my card and put it to last?
We need to get a question here. I'm not sure what the question is.
The question is, will you, if you're elected, will you take my card?
I will shuffle cards with my kids. I will not shuffle cards on the dais.
I will not shuffle cards.
The directions are very clear on our, on all of our agendas. It's printed right on the top that speakers are chosen by the mayor. The mayor chooses the order of speech. We have had times when Mr. Clark was offended, because once we had a bunch of young mothers there, and they asked a previous mayor if they could speak first, because they all needed to get home with their children. They had their kids with them for something, and he let them. And Mr. Clark was deeply offended by that. There are circumstances, as Mr. DeCristo said, where people can ask to speak first, and we usually try to accommodate that. Other than that, the mayor chooses the order, and it's random. Thank you.
I've only changed the cards when I was mayor when someone asked if they could have some car, speakers together. So I did it on the request of the public, but otherwise you just keep them in order the way that the city clerk hands them. But we have had cases where both the current mayor and acting mayor Sullivan, Vice Mayor Sullivan, has purposely moved the cards out of the order that they came in, and it appeared that they did so in a punitive manner. And that's what Mr. Clark is complaining about, that his card was deliberately moved towards the rear, because they don't like the content of what he's saying.
I am currently chairing the Shasta Union High School District. I'm the board of the trustee, Board of Trustees. And the way that we work is very similar to what the city council works, and that is our, the secretary to the board puts the cards in the order that they're received. It's, I think it's a pretty reasonable process. Then there are times, as Mr. Jones referenced, that the speakers would like to have their, you know, their presentations grouped in a certain way, and we accommodate that. I think it's important that we, I've seen the city, that we recognize public speech, and we welcome that. I welcome that at the school board, and that we respect the time that we have, and we do it in a, in a fair manner.
I think, I think I'm left. It's a hypothetical question, and you don't know. What if you get 60 cards, and they're in a certain order, and they ask you to have it in that order, and then you wind up having 60 times 3, 180 minutes of speech? That's really not what it was intended for. But I would think you should trust the mayor, or whoever the person is, to do it in a reasonable order. You have to listen to everybody. I'm not really sure what difference the order makes. You listen to everybody there anyway. So if you think they're listening to you, great. If you don't think they're listening to you, then don't vote for them. But it doesn't seem like a big deal to me on the order. Take them in the order they give them to you. It's the free public comment time, and let them talk.
Yes, hi. The city council voted 3 to do, 3 to 2 to reject the state of Jefferson. What would be your opinion of the state of Jefferson?
That's really not a, well...
Well, you know, it was interesting. It was said of us that we should put for out to a vote, the sales tax initiative. But I didn't see any one of the, the other councilmembers, with the exception of myself and Gary Cad, Councilmember Cad, giving this opportunity for the state of Jefferson to the voters, so that they could vote on it. So I think it's a double standard. I think council picks and chooses what they would like the public to be able to vote on at the ballot. Of course, the public can always come forward and put that on the ballot themselves if they gather the signatures. I think it's a very important issue. We're seeing 1,000 laws a year come out of Sacramento, and it's stifling in all areas, and it takes away our freedom. So I ask you this: what's more important, money or your freedom? Because it's getting real close right now, that the money's not going to mean a lot when we're not free. And I think separating Northern California from the rest of the state of California is a huge issue, and I think it's very important to the city of Reading, and I think it's very important for anybody that loves freedom.
Say you don't have to answer the question if you want to, so, because it's, I'm going to leave it open. I'm trying to, trying to be fair and give free speech here too, without shutting everybody down. And we're down to a minute on the questions, so it's not like we can go on forever.
Okay, the city could influence the Board of Supervisors, because we are the largest, and so it ought to come up, and people ought to at least be given a chance to talk about it. There's enough people, they're doing it. It's not three or four people that are out there trying to cause a movement. It's, it's bigger than that. There's other counties that have said, you know, that it's good. So it's reasonable to at least bring it to a vote. I mean, we can listen on these things. People say it's not sustainable. You know, you'd get rid of all the debt from California. And you have, if you look how far down it goes, it's got a lot of farmland. Is it sustainable? There's a lot of studies that need to be done. But the people deserve the right, and the city council should vote. Just a referent, just something to say to the Board of Supervisors, we suggest that you, you know, approach this and not deny the people the access to, you know, constitutional rights.
I recognize that this is a serious concern for a lot of people, especially in the North State. And I understand that there are the concerns about the number of laws, and believe me, I work in Sacramento, and I'm very familiar with the process down there. I think what the issue is, for me, is there needs to be a lot more studies, and there needs to be a lot more information. The city can send their, you know, information back to Sacramento with their frustrations and their concerns. But the issue for me is that I want to focus more on the immediate needs of the citizens here in Reading, on the crime issue, on jobs and the economy. And the other things that we've identified are really the higher priority needs right here and now for the city of Reading.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Well, let's get on to the next question then. Yeah, go ahead, and yeah, there you go.
Can you hear me now? I'm not sure if this is a council question or not, and I respect you if you say it isn't. But I had a Neighborhood Watch meeting here, and I had a lot of questions that people have heard that they are going to be building a village for the homeless in South Reading, which is where we live. Our concern is, nobody knows where that might be, who's paying for it, and are they still going to continue burning our city down?
What was the last part of the question?
Are they going to continue to burn our city down?
Boy, that's a loaded one.
It's loaded. Let me just give a little bit. I, I think actually that question, more than the state of Jefferson, does have some issues to do with the city. And they talk about a homeless village. I don't like to use the word homeless, because homeless has different meanings for different people. If you lose your house in foreclosure because you lose your job, you may consider yourself homeless, but you can rent a place. If you have to, you talk about a homeless village. So I, so I don't, I don't like to use the word homeless. But what I do say is, there are three groups of people. There are the wills, the won'ts, and the can'ts. The wills are the people that will take help, that should be offered. That help principally comes from federal and state money, which is implemented by the county. The city does have a little bit of money that it provides for that. The can'ts are the people that have mental issues. Again, the same source of funding for them, federal and state, which the county implements. The city may have a little bit for that. The won'ts are the people that won't take help, and they should be gone. They should be out, hiring more police. They, if they can't meet the minimum level to live in society, we don't want them here, and they should find somewhere else to go. The city doesn't have the funds to fix that problem. So, good luck.
I had him. Thank you, Mike.
We're going to have a fight over the mic. First time, first time for everything, you know?
For those of you that weren't sitting in the front row, I said age before beauty. He's saying ladies and gentlemen, thank you, Mike. I can only tell you, the city is not building any kind of structures. We are not in the housing business in terms of building housing. So we are not involved in that. If it's any kind of a facility that someone's creating for people down on their luck, if they're criminals, there are a lot of issues with the city being involved in that, because that involves someone making sure that we're not putting, you know, violent people in with small children, et cetera, et cetera. I am very concerned that we work as well as we can with all the agencies that are involved to look at veterans' housing, because we all know there's money available for housing veterans. And if we have homeless veterans in the camps, things like that, I'm, I'm meeting with some of the people that are providing those kinds of services now, trying to see how we can be helpful with that. Because I don't think not, not a person in this room wants to think about a veteran being on the street if we could prevent that. Thank you.
I'm not going to repeat my speech from the last meeting, because I was pretty adamant about, we have a lot of shame, and I'm going to blame everybody who's homeless, if they're a criminal, that they're transient, that they're not from here, because there's a lot that are from here. And there are people, we need to go out to those camps. I've been out with Jessica Delaney from the Homeless Consortium, and I've met a lot of people. And there are some good, there are people who are working out there who can't afford a home. There are people who are working who can't afford a home, and there are utilities, because they haven't had utilities before. The amount that it takes to get their utilities turned on is too much. They are living out there. They deserve a decent, at least a roof over their head and the heat and the cool. We have got to be human beings to them. If they are criminal, let's make their lives as miserable as we possibly can. But the people out there who are trying, who are living in those camps, they don't all want to be there. It's not by choice. So we have got to be very careful. We have to search each and every one. We cannot generalize these people. And you know, if we have to put them in a place and just give them a shelter, we used to do that. We used to go up to the National Guard Armory, and there was a bus that took them from South City Hall up there, so that they didn't have to stay out in the rain. We can at least be human beings to these people, and you're going to find out there's some great people out there, and it's not their choice. And I would, I would hate to be the one to judge.
So I think there's been some good responses here over the last few forums. I think this is actually one of those questions that there's agreement. I think being part of this human condition is wanting to help our neighbor, or help somebody that's down on their luck. And I'm as much there as anybody. I served two years of time from when I was 19 years old till I was 21, helping people and learning why you got to think about people over yourself. The only separation I make is, I want to help those who are down on their luck, who truly want the help, but I cannot continue to offer services or get behind organizations that are going to offer services to people who are breaking the law and are acting as a magnet. And again, so I want to make that, I, I've heard nothing here from what Mike Quinn said that I disagree with. I agree. I want to make life as hard as possible for those who have no regard for the law, that do not care for the small business owners, who are trying to make a living in this community. It's about compassion for those who are down on their luck, but it's also about compassion for those people who are working hard, trying to make a living.
So, so to answer that question, there is a group that is contemplating having such a facility in, in Reading. And so that's in the first discussions today. They will eventually have to come before the city of Reading, and then they'll have to describe the impacts of what they're doing and, and how that's going to affect the local community in which they're at. And they will have, you know, effects. And so there, there is such a group, they are contemplating that. My question is, is it going to attract more of the same? Or is it going to help certain individuals get back on track? And we have programs in town already. Some have successes, some are not so successful. I was criticized not too long ago by coining the phrase, "Don't feed the bears." But truly, the indiscriminate feeding programs are attracting some more of the same type of problems that we're trying to eliminate. And so we're, we're going to be watching this as it, as it moves forward, but they'll have, they'll have to describe their impacts to the surrounding community.
Okay, we've got time for two, I'm sorry, we've got...
That's okay. I also am concerned about the homeless, and I think one of the things we ought to look at is how the programs that we have that are existing can work better together, how we can identify the gaps. I recently, in fact, invited experts in the area of homeless, so we could share more information with the community at the library. We had almost 100 people there, trying to learn more information about homelessness and what are some of the solutions in our community. So we'd have to examine each proposal as it comes before the Planning Commission or the city council. But we ought to make sure that we have a strategic plan, and that's one of the items that's in Chief Paletti's Course of Action Plan, is item number four, is to create a strategic plan for homelessness. I too have visited with the homeless with Jessica Delaney and Officer Ted Snyder and Alicia from Mental Health, because they are doing research to find out who are the homeless, what are their needs, and what is the best way to address it. So it's, I do not support giving money to panhandlers. We need to focus our attention, our giving to the organizations that make a difference and can, you know, can, we can look at a cost benefit to make sure they're doing what they should do in our community.
So we want a rebuttal? Quick five seconds?
So I actually met with the gentleman who's trying to organize this village for about two hours a couple weeks ago. And I asked him some very pointed questions. You know, what are your funding sources? What, who are the type of people, and how do they qualify for this housing? And after going back and forth, I looked at him, I said, "You have a, you have a big heart. I can see you're truly trying to help, but unfortunately, I cannot get behind and support this, because it has not passed the test that it might not act as a magnet." So that's my position on it.
Okay, very good. We're down to two more questions. I think we got a, I don't want to cut anybody off, but we, we got, we're getting, we're running out of time, so let's try to keep it as pithy as we can. And we thank all the candidates for showing up and taking all the heat as well. And so let's get to the last two questions, and then we'll be done.
All right. I'm going to jump back to the, the whole meeting time thing. Tuesdays at 6:00, is that viewed to be the best time to be heard? The people, that is, to be hearing from the people, is it Tuesday at 6:00? Why not make it a Saturday at 10:00? Is that something you guys would even be willing to change? Is it not so much putting the speaking times at the front or the aft, but changing the whole meeting time period? So that more of us can get out to speak to you guys, because all I'm hearing is, there's not enough people that come out and speak.
There's probably not a perfect time for everybody to come. You have to find a time that's as convenient for as many people as possible. I'd be open to looking at something different if there's a number of people that want to come that way. It's the people's business, and sure, if it happens to be then. I'm not excited about 2:00 in the morning, because I like to sleep. But, but at some reasonable time, if it didn't happen to be Tuesday, it was a different time, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I wouldn't have any problem on any day of the week, but the reality is, trying to get people to meet on a Saturday evening as opposed to a Tuesday, I, I think you'll probably have better luck on Tuesday. Now, originally, our meetings were held at, at 7:00, and we had our closed session from 6:00 to 7:00. And I believe that was a better time than where we have it today. It got people home, they got fed, and then they could come to council. And so I think the 7:00 was, was definitely better than the 6:00. You know, and I'm not sure if the weekend time would be better. A lot of people are doing things out of town, but I'm open to any day. That building is there for you, and I would be open to any day of the week.
Yeah, first time I've been asked that question during this campaign, and again, I think I'd be like many of the candidates here. Whatever got the most people out and were able to do the business of the city, that's what we'd want to do.
Anybody else want to weigh in on that?
You might have to be careful about the cost to that, you know, having city employees working on the weekend. But it's up to the people. And, and so I don't know how you would do a survey and find out what, what time it is. It's the best for everybody. You know, Brent's already talked to us about his soccer family, so we know that, you know, Saturday's at 10:00 might not be good for everybody, and a lot of people are doing that. So it's, you can only set, you know, a certain time and try to make it the best you can.
Down to two people.
Yeah, what I'd like to know from Ali is, what do you think about the sale of McDonald's stuff from Turtle Bay? And do you believe in it? Or do you believe it ought to be gotten rid of?
I think he meant McConnell.
McConnell. Did I say McDonald?
You say McDonald's, yeah. Had me going there. I was thinking Happy Meal right off the top, so...
Sorry. Yeah, I love the golden...
So maybe, go ahead and clarify the question. What do you think of the sale from Turtle Bay and McConnell Landale?
What do you folks feel, that if you were on the council, do you think it'd be worthwhile to selling this property to Turtle Bay, Turtle Bay to McConnell Foundation? Or do you think it ought to be put out again for sale because that property's worth a lot more than they're giving up?
I think, in short, what do you think of the Turtle Bay land deal?
That's how I interpreted the question. I support the construction of the hotel and the sale of the property because it provides economic driver to our community. It'll provide income from the sale of the property to the city of Reading. It will provide revenue for jobs from increased taxes for the sale of the property, which is now a parking lot. So we'll get increased property tax, increased sales tax, and increased transient occupancy tax, somewhere estimated around $700,000 going forward. It also will provide 40 construction jobs and 70 permanent jobs for the hotels, for the workers at the hotel. So it's a good thing for the city of Reading for their revenues, and it's a good thing for the city of Reading. It'll generate more tourism, more money coming into the city of Reading.
I think Turtle Bay is a great asset to our community. We know it draws tourists. Anybody who goes down and walks the bridge any day of the week will hear people from other countries and all over this country visiting our city that might not have visited here in the past. The deal that was cut with McConnell Foundation for Turtle Bay was the only offer that was made to save Turtle Bay. Certainly, the city is in no position to pay for museums when we need police officers and we need streets paved. McConnell offered to be part of this project, to build a hotel, to make Turtle Bay sustainable, to at least work toward that goal. And I support it. If anyone thinks someone else would like to buy property with an 88-year lease and offer us more money, they need to step forward and make that offer.
I find it interesting that McConnell Foundation, being the largest landowner in the city of Reading, needs more land that was needed for open space. Now, city of Reading, we made the five acres available to them, the hospitality parcel, over two years ago, so that hotel could have been built. What I dislike the most is being involved in a deal that belongs to two other individual groups, and then we have to rely upon the indemnification of a third party, thus McConnell, to protect the taxpayers' dollars. That's fundamentally wrong, that's not how deals should be, and I tell you this, the relationship between McConnell Foundation and the city of Reading is simply too close.
Years ago, when I was on the Horse Park Committee, the deal was, we were to sell the McConnell Foundation, the rodeo grounds for $7 million in return, the city was to get something, and that was an asset, and that was the horse park down there. So the Rodeo Association was for it, Asphalt Cowboys were for it. This was a great deal for everybody. There was an equal benefit to both parties. City of Reading was out any money. It was going to bring a lot of business to us here that we didn't have, and the city council voted 3 to 2 not to even talk about it. This was one of the worst votes ever. This deal is a little bit different. When they were offered those five acres for free, they turned it down. I want to know why, if this is so important, and it should have been done. This is another one of the projects we have that takes so long to get done that it's actually going to cost you more. Just like the Riverfront Playhouse downtown, it has taken us so long to build that. They started out at $2 million, they raised half a million, but by the time they did that, it was $2.5 million. So they lost money doing it. These things, when we start them, we need to get them moving, and you've got to get everybody on the same page in the same room and make it work.
It's pretty clear there's a big split. When we moved here in 1994, Turtle Bay had just started, and everybody loved it. The whole community thought it was wonderful, probably had a 98% approval rating. And what it's devolved into 20 years later is a rancorous group on one side and a rancorous group on the other side, and unfortunately, the vote will not solve that. And that's sad for the whole community. Having said that, it got petitioned, it's up to the voters, whatever they vote, they vote. Anybody on the council who gets elected will have to deal with the results of that vote. Having said that, if you took a map of the city of Reading and you erased every single thing that the McConnell Foundation did, including the fireworks they put on every July 4th, you erased the Sundial Bridge, you erased the Lima Ranch, you erased all the money they've given to every nonprofit in town, and said, "Would you like to live in this town without that money from McConnell?" It's a jobs generator, it's important for the city, it generates money for the city. My answer to that is no, I would not like to live here without McConnell, and I'm in favor of the deal.
So I'm going to steal a line from Gary Cad when they were debating Measure F, and I apologize, Gary, if I'm pulling you into this, but Gary said, "Some people are going to like this, some people are not going to like what I'm about to say." And then he said something that I thought was interesting. He said, "At the end of the day, the DNA that makes me make this decision is, there needs to be a voice of the people." And I think at the end of the day, I'm comfortable with that on Measure F. So here's where I'm at on Turtle Bay. It brings jobs to Reading. I grew up here. You know, I was a child. I got to see what the economy was like when I used to go with my dad to work to Hughes Plywood, or worked for my uncle at Hughes Redwood. We need jobs in this community. You may not agree with it, but I told you at the beginning of the night, there are going to be some issues we'll agree on, some we won't, but hopefully, we will, you can expect from us that we'll think it through and will be true to how we view it based on our life experiences. And my life experiences are, we give people jobs, we can solve many of the social ills in our community. Thank you.
We need jobs. That's great. Why isn't the Levinson project built? Why isn't Costco allowed to move out, which is going to generate much more property tax, much more sales tax, much, many more jobs, and they're going to build along the freeway so people going along the freeway can stop here and drop their money? If this is so important, and jobs and all that are that important, let's build an order in which these projects were put out and finish them that way.
Go ahead.
So I'll take my quick rebuttal on that. So again, this is how Brent Weaver thinks. I want the jobs from there, and I want these jobs. Thank you.
The difference is here that that hotel could have been built over two years ago. So this is not about, it's not about jobs, because they could have done that over two years ago. They're not being honest about why they need 14 acres as opposed to five acres. We've given them the five acres. They could have built that hotel more than two years ago. They need to be honest about what this truly is. Is it about prevailing wage, or is it about land? And the public's going to get a right to vote on that here shortly, but just be honest about it.
All right, very good. Are we going to do the last question here? Are you guys up for it? Have we got one guy standing?
You guys got one more in you?
We got... What's that? I will put it to a vote. Everybody says, "Let him have his question." All right, there you go.
It has to be easy, Mike.
Yeah, just make it pithy, the pressure's on.
A crime is immediate concern in Reading, but to resolve the problem seems to be slow. We've seen this crisis coming upon our city not just five years ago, even before that, but the last two years has come on very quickly, almost to an exponential curve, and it's becoming a crisis. And as I observe, our police department, they're doing their job, but the problem is, it's catch and release. They go, they get caught, they go to the judge, and they're released, and they go back and they commit the same crime again, and they're right back in court again.
Have we got a question?
So my question is, what are you going to do to resolve the catch and release and increase the capacity to contain these people once they get caught?
Well, it's catch and release because there are not enough beds in the jail. There is not enough space. The jail is primarily full of people who've been arrested and are waiting for sentencing, and that is part of Measure F. And you can read Measure F, you can read the ballot statement, go to the city of Reading website. But one of the things that the mayor, Mayor Rick Bissetti, who brought this up, was very adamant about, was that part of this money will be spent for consequences, because we all agree that is the biggest part of the problem for the police in dealing with them. So his suggestion is, buy bed space in other areas, get people out of town, make it real unpleasant and inconvenient, move them away from their families. Other options are work release, and if they don't show up for work release, which is a problem now, then put them on the bus, send them someplace else to jail, perhaps spend money to reopen the annex. But we need more consequences for people when they're arrested, and there's no question about that. They're just, the options are very limited. We need Measure F.
I think we all agree on the consequences, and it just shows you that the crime problem requires multiple entities to be involved in multiple solutions. Once again, it's an answer. I could say it's not a city issue, and technically, it's not. The sheriff is the one who's charged with keeping the jail and keeping the prisoners, and that's a county function where the money comes from. What makes it even more difficult is the sheriff doesn't work for the five supervisors. The sheriff works for everybody, because he's an elected official. And I am a little dismayed that the five supervisors are not standing up and saying, "What can we do over here?" I don't see anything affirmative coming out from them. Maybe they have talked about it, I haven't seen it in the paper. None of them running for election, opposed, so nothing happens there. The city's trying to do something. We're proposing things to try and do something, but the city's principal function is with catching and getting them arrested and getting them started in the system, the maintaining them and keeping them is really a county issue, county and a state issue, and that's where the problem needs to be addressed.
You know, so I'll add to Michael's response there. So, you know, I've taken the time to try to meet with Tom Bosenko. I've done a ride-along with the Sheriff Department. I've done two ride-alongs with the Reading Police Department, and the policemen that I've done the ride-alongs with, they will talk how frustrated they are that they're doing their job, arresting people, taking them to the jail, only to see them back out in an hour, two hours. These policemen are a part of our community, they're just as frustrated as we are. I had an opportunity about five weeks ago to meet with Senator Ted Gaines. I got a call from his office and said he would like to meet with me. We spent about an hour, and I spent that entire hour talking about our jail system. I said, "Listen, I'm running for city council, we only control the police department." But he was getting, after he left me, he was going to go and do a tour of the jail system, and I impressed upon him as tactfully as a person can who's just running for office. I said, "We need help up here." Prisoner realignment got dropped on us, and it has been, calling it a crisis exactly what it is. We need short-term, medium-term, and long-term. We got a medium-term solution coming with the new facility on Breslauer Way, but there certainly is no long-term solution that's being debated right now.
Short-term solution? The sheriff can keep somebody who's booked into that jail for 23 hours. We need to demand that they keep them there for 23 hours. We need to make their lives miserable, they're making our lives miserable. How can we do that? They have to stand in a room for 23 hours, then they'd be let go. They're not being booked two or three times a day. They're going to get tired. Arrest them every single day. I know the police are tired of doing this, but we have got to win the war of attrition right now on a daily basis, starting today. They also use as a mode of transportation bicycles. Let's have a city code that says, "If you do not have a serial number on your bicycle, it gets impounded immediately." The police will go out there, grab the bikes, take it away from them. I watch them go downtown every single day, and they're looking in the cars, looking for something, a crime of opportunity, and they will smash that window and grab that computer. That's how they're getting around. Take them and put them on their feet. Put them in there for 23 hours. Make their lives miserable right now. In the meantime, you know, if we gave you $5 million today, we wouldn't have those police on the street. But we can do a better job, and we can report those crimes, and if we get some of the volunteers that they would like to have to start mapping out where all the crimes are, it will help the police do a much better job.
So, right now, in the city of Reading, your sales tax is 7.5%. That goes to Sacramento. 1% of that, 1% comes back to the city of Reading, and then from that, 1.25% goes to the county, partially for public safety, which is the jail and mental health. So we are doing our part. In fact, for everything that's sold inside the city of Reading, we help fund and help, you know, solve some of these problems. So I think we need to find out how much money there is, how well it's being spent. I'm not opposed to putting more money to sending prisoners out. We have about 130 that are already pre-sentenced in the jail.